Good morning. My name is Kent Kim. Yesterday, we had an elucidating exchange of ideas on how to strengthen the global initiatives and cooperation in higher academics. Today, we have asked three honorable scholars to discuss and ponder South-South cooperation in higher academics. We have guests of honor: Professor Haider Ali Khan, professor of economics, Joseph Corbell School of International Studies, University of Denver, advisor to UNTAD in Geneva as well as Asian Development Bank.
Thank you very much. It's my great pleasure to be here.
Professor Keluch Kalu, professor and director of Center for African Studies, Ohio State University.
It is a pleasure to be here.
Dr. Hyun-sik Chang, vice president, Korea International Cooperation Agency.
How are you?
My first question is to Dr. Hyun-sik Chang of KoiKA. Dr. Chang, please explain the concept of South-South cooperation first. Given the nature of globalization, to what extent is South-South cooperation still relevant?
Simply saying, South-South cooperation is cooperation among developing countries by sharing their techniques and financial resources. Therefore, it is a very good scheme as of today, which is welcomed by international community. And also, in a globalization year, I think South-South cooperation is welcomed because no South-South cooperation is a traditional scheme of cooperation was a little criticized by developing countries that it is not working. But South-South cooperation is a new scheme by knowing each other, by understanding each other. So I think it is very innovative schemes.
Professor Haider Ali Khan, what areas of South-South cooperation currently exist? And how might such areas be enhanced?
Yes, well, given what we just heard from Dr. Chang, potentially, there are many areas of South-South cooperation. But from my experience in advising various international organizations and working with NGOs and doing research in the academy, I would say that there are three major areas. First is cooperation in trade. And second would be cooperation in terms of finance and monetary matters. And third would be in technology and, most importantly, knowledge that is related to technology. And here, I think education becomes very, very important indeed.
So these three concepts are all intermingled?
Exactly, exactly.
Great. Hmm, how about Professor Kalu? The early stages of South-South cooperation are known to be labor-intensive, technological cooperation. How did the support and cooperation in higher education area become so significant in South-South cooperation?
Thank you for the question. If we think back to why the South-South cooperation occurred, most of the southern countries were in the periphery of world economy, dominated, of course, by industrialized countries. If we go back to the Bandung Conference of 1955, the original Africa-Asia relationship, you come to understand the need for those who were marginalized to begin to think of ways to collaborate in international organizations against trade restrictions by the industrialized countries. It is in this context that most of the South-South countries found themselves to have quite a large pool of labor, not a lot of technology. And so, the labor-intensive nature of the cooperation was supposed to result in situation where countries with large pool of labor will become the location of manufacturing facilities, which then will lead to export to more advanced countries. In that regard, it worked out in some areas and some areas remain lacking.
So there was a gradual process?
Yes.
Back to Professor Khan, how is the mutual cooperation of South-South cooperation administered?
Yes, that is a very, very good question. And amidst of actually several answers, but I will restrict myself to a kind of synthesis. I again go back to Dr. Chang's initial remarks. He very wisely reminded us that the concept of South-South cooperation has changed. And one of the major changes in orientation is for the South really to be more active and be more involved and to give the South the initiative.
So it was more involving?
Exactly, more participatory.
Great, I see. Related to that, Dr. Chang?
Yes.
What is the meaning of South-South cooperation? And what are the different characteristics compared with the traditional development modality like North-South cooperation? And how this scheme can make some differences in development impacts?
I think there are many salient differences between North-South cooperation and South-South cooperation. The first, North-South cooperation is very vertical. As Professor Khan mentioned, that South-South cooperation is cooperation among developing countries. They understand each other, especially in similar social-cultural settings. They observe together very deeply, so that the impact of aid is working. So it seems to me that the South-South cooperation is very horizontal, while North-South cooperation vertical. On the other end, I think the strengths of South-South cooperation is it is quite replicable to other developing countries as well, because they believe each other. This is very important.
You mentioned horizontal.
Yeah, horizontal, very horizontal, yes, yeah.
Professor Kalu?
Yes.
Just as Dr. Chang mentioned, we can extend. What are some of the strengths and weaknesses or advantages and disadvantages of South-South cooperation?
As I mentioned before, the cooperation occurred in a context in which you have more advanced countries with all the knowledge in terms of trade rules, manufacturing, import, export. And the South-South countries had to learn the rule. And the advantage of cooperating therefore, in the understanding of their similarity of position within the international system, sharing knowledge amongst themselves, especially those countries that already experienced certain level of industrialization before they became part of the South-southern countries, for example, Brazil and India. So those kinds of experience became an advantage that they could pass on to other countries.
To enlighten that point, Professor Khan, are supports regarding educational system development and human material resources important in higher education area of South-South cooperation?
Yes, indeed. Actually, in light of what we just heard from Professor Kalu, he talked about capital. This is really human capital, if you will, but it has many important dimensions. Let me mention something that we did when we were, I was at Asian Development Bank. We tried to look at the educational requirements for growth of Asian developing countries. It was a fairly extensive study, which I oversaw. And we found something very interesting. First of all, countries or economies like Taiwan and Korea, they had emphasized the creation of educational infrastructure, including higher educational infrastructure. So a lot of knowledge and expertise already exists in Asia, in these countries. And surprisingly, India, you know, which is a poorer country in terms of per capita income, also emphasized higher education, what is technically called tertiary education. And we found that some of the rapidly growing economies in Southeast Asia, on the contrary, had a huge deficit in higher education, in tertiary education. So you can see that here in Asia, there is a need for building higher educational infrastructure through mutual cooperation. And we also have this already established reservoir of knowledge and experience and capacity. So we have to, in a way, transfer capacity from those who have built it and have experienced building it, like Korea, Taiwan, India, to those who actually can use it in a productive way. And there, we need to mobilize both physical capital, because you do need to build, you know, things, buildings and educational equipment, scientific labs, et cetera. But we also need to mobilize human resources, and this is crucial, I think. And this is something that I would like to see more of. And Korea, I think, actually can be a leader in this region, in this particular area, among other things.
So you're saying that you just cannot just give capital to educate?
No, no.
Oh, back to Professor Kalu. We're talking about education. What are some expected impacts from supporting higher education?
Let me contextualize my response on Africa. Across Sub-Saharan Africa, many of the primary schools, secondary schools are dilapidated. I mean, they are in shambles. The tertiary institutions are not functioning at full capacity. Most of the highly educated, especially technically educated individuals who remain in the continent do not have the laboratory, the type of science and technology equipment that you need in the lab to conduct research and to engage in innovative research and development activities. So in this regard, there is education deficiency, especially in 2010, 2011. For example, you have approximately 9% of all university students declaring their majors in science and technology, only 9%. That is very insignificant in the larger scheme of things, because it filters then down to secondary and primary schools in terms of production of teachers who can teach to raise the standard, to raise the thinking and creative level of the citizens. It directly impact the capacity of African countries to transition from poverty to any kind of recognizable economic independence. The point can be illustrated by the ongoing farming and crisis drought in the Horn of Africa, in the Sahel. We see the pictures. These are human preventable catastrophes, but it demand education. So in this context, South-South cooperation could indeed be a significant angle to helping the African countries in terms of the human capital, the technological know-how, and the sharing of their expertise in building back up the basic research, teaching, laboratory across the subcontinent.
Back to Professor Khan, how should the targets for educational support be selected? Or are the targets decided based on the demand of the supporting nations? What are the procedures and scales of educational support?
A very good question and a crucial one, because without reasonable targets, we really will not know where we should focus our vision, to use Professor Kalu's excellent characterization. To imagine something different, we have to know where we are and where we really would like to be, on the basis of analysis and good information. Now, going back to what I said initially, we need to have a process that is consultative and that has to be based on sound accounting. And by accounting, I mean a kind of social accounting and social accountability and transparency. These are important principles. But in terms of being able to do it, you also are going to need a certain level of expertise in specific areas. And there, I believe that international organizations can play a major role as long as they're perceived as being impartial and caring about the South. On top of that, I would also add that many southern countries have expatriates who, for one reason or another, are working in international organizations, in developed countries, North America, Europe, Asia, Australia. It is really important to work together with donors and to tap into this resource. It's, for the most part, not exploited. So I think largely, the demand should come from the South, but it should be an informed demand, and it should be a demand that is based on sound analysis and information, rather than just a wish list and an idiosyncratic kind of list. But I think, you know, reasonable people may disagree about certain things.
So the selecting process should be meticulous?
Exactly.
Back to Professor Kalu, which nations are most active in supporting the developing nations in South-South cooperation and the academic field?
I'll look at it slightly differently. I mean, the question you're posing, and answer it this way. There are four key countries regionally that are active, in one way or the other, in fostering South-South cooperation. Definitely, China is a key player in this regard. India, with its Food for Work program, has been a major player. Brazil, with its Hunger alleviation project. The Republic of South Africa in Southern Africa has been quite helpful in helping with regional integration and doing the kinds of things that the ideas about South-South cooperation aimed to do, which is to reduce the constraints and problems that poorer countries have. South Korea is doing a good job in terms of replicating, in my perspective, the American Peace Corps kind of activity, sending young people to African countries and elsewhere. So these kinds of countries, South Korea, China, Brazil, India, South Africa, Nigeria very long ago was a participant, indeed, sent technical experts to the Caribbean islands to help them with both bureaucratic, filling the bureaucratic positions and also sending them teachers and other technical experts. But it's no longer doing that itself, it's needing help.
That's quite enlightening. Well, as Professor Khan and Professor Kalu mentioned about international perspectives, how about Dr. Chang?
Yes.
What are the Korean government's aid policy and strategy in achieving the MDGs?
Before I start, I would like to mention what is the meaning of Millennium MDGs. MDGs refers to the Millennium Development Goal, which was formulated in 2000 in a general assembly in UN headquarters. And this is a new framework of development cooperation in 21st century. And all countries, including UN and other donor agencies, adopted Millennium Development Goal as their own objective. I think this is very constant for the development cooperation as well. And the most important goal of Millennium Development Goal is to reduce the poverty by half until 2015. This is target year of it. And in this sense, I think Korea is best positioned to share poverty reduction experience, because we already escaped from vicious circle of absolute poverty from 1950 to 1960 and achieve social and economic development. Therefore, we have very good positions to share that kind of thing. Therefore, I think our government also proclaimed to increase our foreign aid volumes. For example, as of today, this year, our ODA volume was almost 1 billion US dollars, correspond to 0.13% of GNI. But our government has planned to increase up to 0.5% by 2015. This is really a drastic increase of it. In other words, this is the symbolizing of the strong will of our government to achieve Millennium Development Goal.
Not to change the subject, Korea has provided its development experiences and know-hows to other developing countries.
Yes.
What are some examples? And is it possible to apply them with different, for example, political, economic, social, and cultural settings from Korea?
Maybe this is a good question, but very difficult question to answer. But during my service in KoiKA for 20 years, and then I traveled many countries to review our project site. And then, my observation is that we have many good know-hows and experience to share with the developing countries. For example, I can say, as I mentioned, that to reduce poverty, this is very important way. And also, how to achieve economic development in a short period of time is just one case of it. And as Professor Khan and Professor Kalu mentioned, that education, this is, I think, driving force for Korea's development. Therefore, we can share that kind of thing. And in case of health, family planning project is quite impressive, to such extent we are right afraid of, you know, trouble of our labor forces in 20 years later. But anyhow, this is another things. And also, as mentioned yesterday in a symposium, that we have very good rural development, so-called New Village Movement, Semal Movement, which is quite well-known and welcomed by developing countries. Our debt, also IT, pictures and the carbonases, to name few, there are many, many, I think, area which we can share in developing countries. For example, whatever political or social-economic different setting, the main goal is social and economic development of themselves by separate lines. In this case, I think Koreans' scheme maybe apply to them by a kind of education, for example, and also rural development too.
From Dr. Chang's point of view, I get the sense of sharing, not just giving capital or just handing it down. So to further Dr. Chang's point of view, Professor Kalu, each nation must have its environmental advantages for South-South cooperation. How can we match these advantages of the supporting nations and needs of the developing nations?
That's a challenging question, because if we think in terms of environment, and we are thinking about in terms of geography, you find that South-South cooperation amongst Asian countries will be much deeper, more systematic, and more involved because of the proximity between these countries. But when you then extend it out to Africa, the distance becomes an issue, the same thing with South America. But going beyond that, if we think in terms of climate, I am not in the least surprised that most of the southern countries that are advancing faster than others are located in regions with weather variations. For example, I'm sure if you live in South Korea, you have to think about when it gets cold, and you have to imagine how to produce shoes and clothing to take care of those bitter cold periods. And in the summer, you have to think differently. So the environment ignites creative thinking that might result in entrepreneurial activities that may be absent in a different environment, like in the case of many Sub-Saharan region, where the desert encroaches almost on a minute-by-minute basis. But more significantly, to look at environment more closely, in line with what my colleague has said, Korea can share water, sanitation, public health experiences. These do not need cultures, because the knowledge to purify the water can be used anywhere. And part of the problem in Africa is access to clean water. If that knowledge can be shared, it improves health. No serious medical practice can exist without water. No manufacturing can exist without water, just to take that simple example. Your energy production capacity, that can be shared in that location. Perhaps this might become the basis for mitigating the impact of environmental change on the livelihood of people in Africa. But I'm looking at this from distance, from weather, and the knowledge that we can share to empower those that need empowering.
Back to Professor Khan.
Indeed.
Out of the many fields for cooperation, which areas have the highest demand?
That's actually a more complicated question than it appears to be, because the world is uneven. And as Professor Kalu mentioned, for instance, in Africa, basic needs are really very urgent, basic healthcare, subsistence, food, shelter, fuel. In other areas, they may be different. I would say that we have to distinguish between immediate needs and medium-to-long-term strategic needs for development. Several years ago, actually, I wrote a monograph on Africa, African debt and sustainable development. There, I argued that for Africa, the debt burden, which African people had nothing to do with, but basically, the corrupt rulers who colluded with international finance in its various manifestations, created this situation, now disastrous for the people. And then, we have environmental issues like soil erosion, desertification, problem of water that Professor Kalu mentioned. But these problems really cannot be solved by one-time resource transfer, humanitarian aid. But of course, we have to do that, because it's a crisis situation. But what happens after that? For that, I think some of the things that Korea has done, to be concrete, are really important to think about, because Korea started with one of the biggest disasters in the world, the Korean War. the Korean War, the tremendous devastation that people suffered, a story that I think still needs to be circulated to the world at large. The world doesn't know what the Koreans faced. I think needs to be articulated better by learning from experiences such as the Korean experience. But that's not the only one. India has lessons to teach, Brazil has lessons to teach, Mexico even has lessons to teach as well as to learn. Taiwan is a very impressive case as well. So I would say that meet the immediate needs and those demands must be raised in the context of South-South cooperation. But then we have to demand better education, better educational infrastructure. We have to demand the creation of a health infrastructure that is self-sustaining and that requires training people. And also, and this is very important because most of my life's work so far has been concentrated in this area, transfer of appropriate technology and not just the physical technology, but the knowledge that is embodied in human brain and infrastructure, institutional infrastructure of education. And this is going to take time, it's going to take effort. And there are specific kind of problems that each country faces at specific times. And here, I think more than ever, we need to draw upon the huge pool of untapped resources, human resources that exist both in developed countries and in developing countries. There are such things also as indigenous knowledge structure that we ignore. So we have to really focus very carefully on many, many different areas. And we have to be very open to dialogue at all levels.
It sounds like we have to rely on scholars like you and we have to really come together.
Well, I am over learning.
Professor Kalu, what other areas of cooperation do not yet exist that might enhance South-South cooperation?
What other areas? The one area I think I'm not seeing significant movement in, perhaps, is in the area of climate change mitigation. I'm not seeing significant movement in that area. And it is one in which I think the southern countries need to take seriously. I am not seeing a serious effort in, for me, what is extremely important, and that is collaboration to bring about gender equity, to educate the women. It is well-known that an educated woman not only earns income, but when she has children, the children tend to have higher standard of living compared to their parents. But more importantly, an educated professional woman is able to protect her family more effectively and in fact enhances demand. So we can, within the South, take a leadership role in this regard.
It is likely that different strategies must be designed for each country for the higher efficiency. What are some examples of those strategies?
I think for us to design strategies, we have to know what each country or what region needs. Let me, because Africa is not talked about often, so I'll limit my comment here. Majority of the African countries essentially exist in terms of governance in the capital cities. There are no adequate roads that connect the cities to the rural areas. This is not just for transportation. This is a security issue, it's a health issue. And it impacts other aspects of life. So if we look at the Sub-Saharan African region or the entire African continent and we ask, what is one thing that could change dramatically the continent? Well, make it accessible. Make it accessible. In a world where resources, human, and capital are not limitations, I would say one strategy in that part of the world is to link, build a road, railway around the continent. And then north and south, east and west, highway the same way and feeder roads into every country. You create massive mobility, ability, people to go from point A to point B. I think if that were to happen, one of the problems in the continent would be reduced, if not significantly ended. Conflict. Traditional African nations were able to escape conflict because there were no boundaries restricting their mobility. And they did not just escape conflict, they escaped environmental problems. They could, they would sense when the desert encroaches and move before it gets there. But now, we have all these camps here and there with its own problems. That's one thing. The other thing, energy. If we have roads and we have steady supply of energy, business activities would grow. Manufacturing, education. Part of what I learned in this conference is, is it YAHCA? Night School?
YAHCA.
YAHCA, YAHCA, Night School. You wouldn't be able to effectively implement YAHCA in many African rural areas because you don't have electricity. There is no light. So if we focus in terms of strategy for transforming human lives, strategy for development, we look at those fundamentals and draw from the experiences of countries like South Korea. If China is willing to come on board as an effective partner, India, Brazil, these things can be done not necessarily as gifts. These are business opportunities for companies and countries willing to take the bold steps.
Dr. Zhang, I'd like to hear your opinions on the practical approach of educational support.
And when it comes to you said priority, I think the most important thing is to respect the culture of developing partners. As our president Li mentioned many times, that when we provide aid, we have to have with two hands. It means that we respect and consider the situation of developing partners as a friend. That kind of I'll give and you will receive it. This is a quite, you know, not a good way to have good relations by that. Therefore, to respect their cultures and their priority as well, also to respect their ownership. Without ownership, I think, not effective. Even though we provide enormous amount of money or finance or taking a corporation to develop partners, unless they have that kind of ownership, it is not sustainable. But this is my conclusion about it. So respect their cultures, their priority first. Also, to respect the ownerships, well guarantee and effectiveness of all the programs of that. Yes.
I get the sense of partnership, true partnership.
Very important. Partnership is to regard developing partners as a friend. It's a horizontal, not kind of vertical situations like that, as we mentioned. And therefore, we do not use the foreign aid. Instead of it, we use the term of development cooperation. And then we do not use the recipient countries, but use partner. So partnership is very important. Yes, that is underlying the basis of spirit of cooperation.
It really doesn't help them ultimately. It increases dependence rather. So what we did was to train Indonesian statisticians, Indonesian economists, Indonesian, especially junior-level officers in the Ministry of Finance and other branches of the government. As a consequence, I'm really happy to say that Indonesians are producing probably the best social accounting matrix, not just in the developing world, but in the world. And this is, in my view, a major success story of knowledge transfer. But you know, here you have somebody who is very experienced, lives in a developing country, highly educated, and knows what he or she is talking about. And you are lecturing that person about structural adjustment, about how they should reduce their budget deficit, what projects and programs they should cut. Not only is it arrogant, it's foolish. So I think this two-way dialogue is important, the real sincere commitment to not make people into your clients forever and dependent on you. These aid dependence also will lead to aid fatigue naturally. Good people don't want to work in these establishments from developed countries either, when you have other opportunities. But you need good people for these things to succeed. So it is so important to do what Dr. Zhang has told us. And in addition, I would add this. I would say that again, draw upon expertise from the developing countries within and also those people who are scattered for many reasons all over the world. It is so important to create networks. And today, it is easier than ever to create networks, to identify those people who have real knowledge, real expertise, real experience, and real dedication.
As long as you have a will, we can just...
There is a way.
You know, you start.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for your opinions. Lastly, please comment on the blueprint of future UNI activities. And we'll, let's go one by one. We'll start with Professor Kalu.
I have to confess that I have not read the blueprint. But listening to the Secretary-General's presentation and knowing the little I know about the framework itself, the whole idea of education, collaboration, social responsibility, freedom of information, human rights-based education, and bringing universities together to collaborate, to enhance global knowledge, this is one that can only move us progressively forward. Because the young people today are the, are going to be the elders of tomorrow. And so if we take the United Nations academic impact framework and begin to embed it not just at the university level, but all the way down to primary school level to the extent that we can embed parliamentary procedures, debate simulations that let them communicate across cultures, across languages, regions, etc. To that extent, we'll build a platform on the basis of partnership, respect, on human, core human essence rather than human difference.
About Dr. Zhang.
Well, I'm working at Koika. This is an implementation agency of development cooperation. And as the objective of UNI is to narrow the education gap between the nations, I think this is in favor with our vision of Koika. So it is my hope that we will explore the way or the area which we can cooperate with UNI projects in the future. However, as we all agreed, that education is very important in achieving Millennium Development Goal in the world.
Professor Khan?
Well, I think many important things have already been said. But I would first say that actually the Secretary-General is coming to our school, Joseph Corbell School of International Studies, and honoring us with his presence on the 25th of August. So I will raise many of these issues with him again there. But I think one thing that is very important to remember is that we need solid networks of dedicated people. The blueprint is only really a document, a piece of paper. It's a declaration of intention at best. To implement it and to improve upon it or change it because I think it will need to be changed because circumstances are always changing, one has to really have a solid network of dedicated professionals who can connect with people at the grassroots level at the same time. So that would be my major recommendation. And there are many practical ways of implementing this, which people in the field certainly have thought about and we should draw upon that knowledge. And people from the academy who are interested, who have personal experiences, like Professor Kalu and myself included, we both come from developing countries and we know people from developing countries. I think the way to proceed would be to work together and work with real knowledge and knowing also where our knowledge stops and we ourselves need to learn.
This has been extremely insightful. I get the sense of true partnership, true respect and education. First, thank you, Professor Khan.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Thank you, Professor Kalu.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zhang.
Thank you very much.
UNI is the core project of UN Secretary-General Ban Ki-moon. The main theme of UNI Seoul Forum is New Partnership for Change, United Nations and Academic Community. The world which collaborate to form one academic community is the world that provide us with not only a hope, but a practical springboard. Today, we have shared enlightening thoughts with global leaders on South-South cooperation of UNI Seoul Forum. Thank you.
Thank you very much.